Good evening, everybody. Our May 22, 2003 meeting is now called to order. We will have invocation by yours truly. I'm ask Councilman Harrington to lead us in the pledge. May we stand for prayer and pledge? Let us pray. Oh dear God, how excellent is your name in all the earth. We thank you for being the creator of all creatures. We thank you now for another day, another opportunity, to serve you well, but also to serve the residents of this historic city. I pray that you would guide us, that our motives are clear, and we're set on one goal collectively, as mayor, council, and other staff, to improve the city that we have. We thank you for your guidance in this endeavor. In your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman, for that. All right. Next item is the reading and approval of the minutes from our May 8, 2023 meeting.
Mayor, make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes, May 8, and that it be approved with no corrections. I second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as they have been recorded. Counsel, any comments or questions about that motion?
No.
Any public comments or questions about that particular motion? CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item, we've got a presentation from Mr. Jason Summerlin, and we're going to ask that Mr. Summerlin would come forth, and whenever we start the live meeting, and he's coming with his wife, Marty, she's here as well. So we just ask that whenever you're speaking, I don't know if just one speaker or each of you approach to mic, just state your first and last name, just one time. You only have to do that whenever you're talking into the mic, okay?
Jason Summerlin with Darkwoods Adventure Park.
Marty Summerlin, Darkwoods.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we've, some of you we've spoken to about this project over the last few months. This is something that we've, we're interested in expanding here in Nakadish. And I'm going to start, I've got about eight or 10 slides here that I want to show you some things here that pertain to this new venture. First of all, for those of you who aren't familiar, we are Darkwoods Adventure Park. We're on University Parkway. We are, and we have just begun breaking out our company to a new venture called Darkwoods Outfitters. It's wholly owned by us. We do not have any investors. We do not have any partners or anything. It's our personal business. What we have attempted to do as a park is bring family entertainment here. Most of you know that we started as a haunted attraction about eight years ago. We've branched out into Darkwoods Christmas, which brings in thousands, tens of thousands at this point, of visitors in addition to what we've already got. On top of our Halloween event, now we've gone into year-round activities with the Lost Treasure Mining Company. This new attraction that we're looking at is actually set to, we would like to focus within the city of Nakadish, but our ultimate goal is to expand this project through the 10 parishes of Senla. We are looking at the established waterways that are already here. The city of Nakadish has got two, or actually three phenomenal waterways. We're in the process of dealing with three separate entities here. And what our goal is, is to establish a brand-new technology that is an unmanned, completely wireless, and solar-powered kayak rental kiosk. These would allow us to bring kayak rentals into the local area for people who are on vacation, for people who live here that might not necessarily have the ability to stow, travel, purchase, those types of things. We're trying to keep the cost very nominal. This is just a little bit of information that we've received locally or recently. We've been working with Heartland Forward, with Walmart Group over the last few months in gathering data through their work here in central Louisiana, dealing with outdoor recreation. Louisiana is unique in that, as a state, about 21% of our recreation comes from boating and from fishing, from things like that. And we're established here in Nakadish on both Kane River Lake and Sibley Lake. Chaplain's Lake pulls into that as well. The unique part of this is that since COVID, outdoor recreation opportunities are growing exponentially across the United States. And Louisiana, right now, according to the Heartland Forward's research, shows that Louisiana is at the top of the expansion in the southern United States where outdoor recreation is concerned. Other states have dropped off in opportunity and availability. Where Louisiana, we apparently love our state more than we actually realize sometimes. So what we're looking to do is take advantage of that to help bring additional activities to Nakadish. This is an example of one of the kiosks. It's an industrial locker system that works with state-of-the-art technology touchscreens and QR code release and development. What it'll allow us to do is store both two-man and single-user kayaks, all of the personal protection equipment, life jackets, infant, youth, and adult, plus paddles, everything that you would need as an individual to either take your family out, or yourself, or a date, or something like that, and kayak on one of these waterways. The system works on a rental basis. These are in use at 32 state parks in the state of Texas already. This is something that's relatively new within the last two years or so, within the outdoor recreation ability or industry. They're a hard install. They have no, or a light install. They have no concrete pads that are required or anything like that, no electricity. It works off of its own solar unit. It's purely cashless. It works touchless. Our new update version of it will actually use a QR code so that you handle everything directly from your phone. I think most of us are used to doing that nowadays. The footprint is only about a 5 by 10 area. It takes a very small amount of ground. The customer, the way that this works is the customer agrees to the waiver, the waivers and all of the waterway regulations for the particular waterway that they're on are given to them at the time of rental. They choose the type of kayak that they want. They show how many hours they want to rent it for. They either swipe their credit card, or it's a QR code reading. As their credit card clears, the lockers pop open, and they allow the user to remove the equipment. I'm not going to show the video that goes with this. To return the equipment, the customer brings everything back, enters the last four digits of the phone number. The lockers reopen, and they're allowed to reset. At that point, our question has always been, what about theft? In the event of theft, we already have their credit card information. We have their home address, and we have GPS trackers and all of the equipment. So at that point, we just contact local law enforcement, and they deal with it from there. The machine goes through, walks the user through the process of sealing everything back up, and you start all over again. We're asking for a franchise agreement similar to the River Queen and to Nakadish Paddle Sports to operate one of these kiosks at the Washington Street Landing on Kane River. We will name the city and any other entities that are deemed necessary as, I'm sorry, Sibley Lake. Sibley Lake. These will be named as additionally insured, and we'll take care of all the maintenance. We'll take care of everything that goes along with it. And just to clarify that and to correct myself, we are looking, with you guys, we're looking at the Sibley Lake launch on 504. That close proximity to the hotels at Interstate and give us the ability to bring people in off of the Interstate, hopefully new users that would never have come to Nakadish under any other circumstances, but we definitely want to provide that for new visitors that are staying there at the hotels. And so that's really, that's it in a nutshell. If you have questions, I'd be glad to entertain those. And I believe that, I believe that's all we've got.
Well, thank both to you, Jason and Marty, for not only being here tonight, but just the contribution made in our city parish so far. I know we can remember, how long has the haunted, how do you call it, the haunted adventure? How long?
We opened in 2015, so we're starting our ninth season.
Yeah. And I know people, when you go during October, you see that that has really grown. But they've expanded to other things as well. You've got the mining that you do.
We just opened a new bear factory. That's basically.
What is that? What's another?
A new bear factory. It's like a.
Okay.
And then we're still waiting for our turn to come in for our 18-hole, 19-hole adventure boat's coming in still. So lots of good things, just trying to get Nakadish families away from their TVs, away from their electronic devices out, get them on these waterways, get them out doing stuff, doing family stuff. This is our newest adventure.
They've been really innovative. Now, I haven't gone to the haunted houses yet, not because I'm afraid. But, I mean, just some really cool things going on. So actually, there was a conversation, Rebecca, Laura, and I, with some guy out of Massachusetts. And then I think that, you know, we all walked away saying, look, it'd be great to have it, but we really want, if it's somebody in Louisiana. Didn't know that, you know, it would be folks who are, who live in our parish. But, yeah, this is great. Based on what you all have done in the past, I know you're going to do well with this, so. I don't know, Counsel, you got any comments or questions for the Summerlins?
I just want to say, people are always saying there's nothing to do, need more activities for family and, you know, young people. So I think that'd be great.
Well, we do know that, you know, Sibley, y'all are in cahoots with.
It's a 50/50 responsibility.
Yeah. And we've presented to them. They even called us this morning. They're very excited. They wanted to hear what you all say tonight, and they're ready to go and ready to get something going with us. So Tommy Murkison already has the agreements drawn up and so forth, so just waiting for approval through y'all.
Has it gone to them yet, you said?
Yes.
Oh, they've approved it already?
Well, I guess it's.
According to our phone conversation this morning, yes, it is. But I think they were just waiting to hear.
Gotcha.
And just to clarify, this is at zero expense to the city. This is all out of our pocket. Anything that, anything that deals with this, this is purely our venture.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So what do you need in the city to do now?
We just need a franchise agreement that says that we're allowed to operate on Sibley Lake, and that we will not have another company that does exactly what we do come in on top of us, that will be able to do that.
No money that, I know, I want to hear him say it, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So is the, it's going to be like the paddle boat downtown?
No.
Franchise agreement.
Oh, yes, yes. Something similar to that, from what we understand.
So they're going to, you're going to have it like a venue, a venue machine there for the, so is somebody going to be there operating it?
No.
Or it's just going to be operated?
It's self-operating.
It's a coke machine with kayaks.
It's a strictly vending machine.
So would it be like, like for age limit-wise, like people, you know, how would it cut off during?
Okay, there are restrictions with that. As an individual, you have to be 18 years old to rent that. You have a waiver that goes with that, a legal waiver that comes with it. Plus, you have to have the credit card in order to use it. The kiosks are actually locked on a time basis, so they can't be rented prior to daylight, and they can't be rented after dusk. So there's a safety feature built into it in that way. That's just part of the way that it's set up.
Think like the riverboat, there's a certain time they start and a certain time they end, so you're going to be the same way, cut off time.
I'm excited about it. Let's move forward, in my opinion.
And like I said, Tommy has been working on this for us, and I think there's been conversations directly with you all, with Tommy, so I think it should be something that could appear on the next agenda in June, I think is what we're trying to aim for, okay?
That would be fantastic.
All right. Well, look, y'all keep being innovators, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Look, let me, I failed to read this. Please take a moment to silence your cellphones during the meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. So we want to make sure we keep conversations to one microphone, okay? All right. So, next item on the agenda. Certainly, thank you Summerlins for being here tonight. Next item is a proclamation read by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 047 of 2023. The proclamation declares 2023 as an older Americans' month in the city of Nakadish. Whereas the older American months were established in 1963, only 17 million living Americans had reached their 65th birthday. And whereas the older American month has been time, acknowledgeable that the contributions of the past and the current older person to our country, particularly those defined by our country. Whereas the city of Nakadish recognized the need and created the city that provides service, support. Older Americans need to thrive life independently for as long as the possible live. Whereas the city of Nakadish can walk to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs and working with the Council on Agency to encourage independence and ensure that activities or response and individual need to preference and increase access to services that support aging in place. And now for their Ibu, Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor of the city of Nakadish, do hereby proclaim that 2023 the older American month in the city of Nakadish.
I second. Did we get a motion?
No, she hadn't. I move to adopt Resolution Number 047 of 2023.
Now you can say.
Second. All right, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the proclamation. We had an opportunity to present the proclamation at, what was it called, Councilwoman Laura Smith? Was it Older Americans Program?
Yeah.
All right, I think it really, it was Thursday, yeah. It was a really good program, I think, for the portion that I was able to stay. So we read it, obviously with the contingency that this will be presented at the City Council today and put up for a vote, so.
He didn't meet the age limit, but he was there.
Yeah. I mean, some may say the gray hair gets me there, but anyhow. Again, I think this is something that we should acknowledge, our older Americans, and think of ways in which we can continue to include, develop activities for. I know we've talked about doing some things, parking rec, that includes some of our older Americans, older Nakadish residents. So these are the things that we should and will be very determined to do. So don't know if there's any comment or questions, Counsel, about this particular motion to adopt this proclamation? Again, basically making the month of May older Americans' month. Any public comment or question here? Okay, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Didn't really ask anybody from the Council on Agency to be here, but Councilwoman Washington Eli, if you'll pass that down to Councilwoman Laura Smith. And we appreciate you for getting that to somebody at the Council on Agency to have, as we have declared this month older Americans' month. All right, next item on the agenda. We have some ordinances up for final. We do have the, that we're requesting comment at this time on ordinance number 26 of 2023, adopting the millage rate for the tax year 2023. And again, the way we remember this, because I think we discussed this at our last meeting, this is no new tax. This is something that, I'm sorry.
You're skipping, you skipped one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Moving too quick. All right, we have a planning and zoning item for final, and that's read by Councilman Harrington. All right.
This is ordinance 29 of 2023. This is for finals introduced at the last meeting. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 64 of 2001 by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. It's 104 Mill Street, and this is to rezone the property from B3 Commercial to B3 Commercial with additional BA zoning for multi-purpose restaurant venue. Yet again, 104 Mill Street. I move to adopt ordinance 29 of 2023.
Second.
Okay, all right, there we go. Y'all got me straight. All right, now, we know Mr. Kelly Dordlen is here. We've been in conversation with him. Randy LaCass certainly has been in conversation. He's gone before planning and zoning. I think they shared with us the last meeting what their plans are, Counsel. All right, I don't, do we need Mr. Dordlen to say anything else? I think he's pretty much made it clear at this point. It went through the city, I'm sorry, the planning and zoning unanimously. It's going to be, was across the street in the Mill District, but as far as Economic Development District goes, it is included, along with those other old ADM buildings. This LH Johnson is what it's called here locally. So it is certainly prime location, it's on the river. I think they're going to do some really great things here that's going to, you know, just add to, you know, another reason to come to Nakadish, another reason for our residents to take part in something, you know, that we have available here for. So don't know if you have any comment or question, Counsel, about this particular item? Are there any public comments or questions about this one? Okay? All righty. CNN, oh, I think we got a hand back there. Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, state your first and last name, and then whatever your question happens to be.
It's just a simple question. Edlin Creighton, 218 Second Street. What is it going to be? Did you say, or did I miss that?
We didn't say at this meeting. We have said at the last meeting. I don't know, Mr. Kelly, if you want to come and address it, or? Yeah, come on in and address it.
Good evening, Mayor, Wynn, Council. My name is James Dordlen, owner of the LH Johnson Building. We plan on using it for a multi-purpose building. It will be a venue style as well for weddings and events, and we're planning on also having some food there as well. We'll have a menu out at some sort, but that's what we're going to be using the building for, is hosting events and venue.
Okay, hosting events and a venue spot. All righty. Thank you, Mr. Dordlen. All right, any other questions or comments here? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. I think it's going to be a really great addition to our local economy, so congrats and good luck to you, Mr. Dordlen. All right, now get into where we're going to request public comments on ordinance number 26 of 2023, adopting the millage rate for tax year 2023. Again, this is just the comment section, so don't know if there are any public comments. As we stated, I started to state earlier, these are no new taxes here, no new property tax levied. Pretty much a standard procedure for us here in terms of what the City Council does. I think it's, is it always this particular meeting, Stacy?
Yes.
Is it always a meeting like this in terms of time of year? Second meeting in May, pretty much, okay? Any comments or questions here about this item? Okay. Yes, sir, you can come to the microphone, please. State your first and last name.
Carl CS. This, you say that this is not a, this is a renewal of a tax. What does that, the renewal consist of? I can read it on there, but what is this here, this here is all about?
I think it's just a standard property tax that we have here in the city, and our finance director couldn't be here tonight. She could explain perhaps in more detail. Did she leave you with anything, Jenna? Nothing in addition to that? And Jenna is stepping in for it tonight, y'all, look at her, all right? She's doing a great job in finance. But, yeah, it's just our standard property tax, which, I don't exactly remember the millage that we levy, but.
Well, how much, how much money does this tax actually generate? Do y'all know, anybody know? I mean, I know it's a renewal, but if it's a renewal, it have a base salary or base, what you call it? So I was just trying to figure out, since nobody know, then y'all should want to hold it up till the finance director get back, and maybe she can explain what it actually is, because if it's a mere tax, I think people would want to know exactly what it actually is. I mean, I know it's not something that would hurt the people for us voting for, but somebody ought to have the gumption to explain exactly what actually, that actually mean, just saying that it's just a renewal, but somebody ought to know before they put it up on the board what it just actually consists of.
Is that, okay, thank you, Chief Wynn.
So it's not exactly.
Excuse me, excuse me.
He's going to attempt.
He gonna stop the clock while he cut in?
You could pause it, Mrs. Stacy. You could pause it. Yes, sir, go ahead, Chief.
So it's not, so I don't think it's actually a renewal. It's just adopting the millage rate that's already been voted upon. So for instance, like for the fire department, or for the fire, or the safety tax, the hazard tax, it's a 10-mill rate. So it's just adopting the current millage rate, if I'm correct, if I'm not wrong.
Right, no, you're right.
And if I'm correct, is this done, I think, like every 10 years? Is that what it's done like every 10?
I think every year, they, yes, they vote on it every 10 years, and they renew the rate every year, I believe.
I think it's more or less a formality, what we're doing.
Right. So they assess property tax every four years, and based on the assessment is where you get your millage from, and that's set for four years. So next year, they'll do an assessment of the property, and that might, millage may change. It just depends on the.
That's on the home property of the people. Okay, all right, all right.
So this is saying three years, three years ago. This is the fourth year, so nothing's changed.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. You go ahead and run your clock. Since she stole me out of something, my business.
Right. Any other, okay, I see you, Mr. Creighton. You come back to the microphone.
Edlin Creighton, 218 Second Street, Nakadish. If you're going to use this thing again, is there a typo there? Is it?
Yeah, take out the E.
Just to check.
Okay, I got you. I got you. It says. I got you.
Take out the E. Mileage.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. So do we need to officially close that down or what we do? Just move on?
Well, we need to motion, we actually need to read it. Nobody has read it.
Okay.
That's Harrington.
This is ordinance twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance adopting the millage rate for the tax year two thousand and twenty-three. The following millages are hereby levied on a two thousand and twenty-three tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the City of Natchitoches. This is the public safety tax of ten mills, the general alimony tax of seven point zero three zero mills, for the total millage of seventeen point zero three zero. I move to adopt ordinance twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Motion made in second. Counsel, you got any comments or question about this? Again, as we stated, what Miss Stacy said, what Chief Wayne said, just a pretty standard procedure here. All right? I, I don't know if we already asked for public comments at this point, so. Okay.
What is alimony tax?
That's written in the, in, in what you read? Okay. I don't, I don't, I don't have, our finance director would know that.
I would turn you, can I would turn you answer that?
It's your general, so the, there's the public safety of ten mills, that's fire. And it's just fire for that one. Is there's a fire in police? That's just fire, yeah. And your general alimony is your general property tax that goes to pay for all other things the city provides.
And this, and this is the same rate for businesses as it is for, for residences? Is that, is my understanding when you tax?
Yeah, it's all property owners.
It's all property in the city limits.
Fourth year to.
Not for business.
But the rate is the same.
It stays the same every single year until, I think it's every ten years the people vote on it again, the repass. Is that correct? Every ten years?
Every ten years, they make.
It goes back up to the people to vote on it. But this is what was passed by the people, so every year stays the same.
Okay, thank you.
What does it say, turn to Washington?
I said it's generally reassessed like on every four years.
Yeah, for the, the property values. But isn't it the, this amount, is it passed by the people every ten years? Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, it depends what the term of the proposition is. But it comes up for a vote and we renew it through a vote.
Yeah.
The assessment is every.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So we're just, we're just passing along what's already been.
It just has to come, I don't know why it has to come before each year.
It does.
But it does, it's, it's an every year thing. Nothing changes. I remember seeing this every year since I've been on this, since I've been mayor. So, okay? All right. All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll car vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is read by Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-two-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Nagus to award the bid for a digger Derrick truck for the City of Nagus Utility Department. Whereas this bid was advertised in the Nagus Times on April eighth, April thirteenth, and April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in accordance with the law. Whereas one bid proposal was received and opened as follows. That was with Altech LLC of Birmingham, Alabama, at three hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. This ordinance was introduced on May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and published in the Nagus Times on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I so moved that we adopt ordinance zero-two-seven.
Second.
Motion made in second. Matt, I think, explained well what the digger truck is. This actually is not a digger truck. You said this is a what?
Bucket truck.
It is a bucket truck, but the digger does what it says. It digs in the ground. Where we can set the post. Right, I got you. All right. And these are the ones that we had to kind of get ahead? Is that the same one or we had? We just need this one right now.
Yeah, this is, we, we're replacing one that we had leased for five years.
Okay.
And the lease was up. So we decided, this one was available, we decided to go ahead and buy it instead of the lease again.
Okay. Comments, questions, counsel, about this? Again, like I said, I know he explained it the same way the last time we met. This was on the agenda. Public comments or questions here?
While he's coming to, Matt, did you say we got a, did we get a grant for this or not? Is this just money the city's putting out?
Yeah, this is budgeted, budgeted funds, right?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna put a hundred thousand down on it from some budgeted funds and then finance the rest through Altech Capital.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, call size. Uh, is this the same truck we talked about that costs a hundred thousand dollars?
We're putting a hundred thousand down payment on this truck and we'll finance the rest.
Well, to my understanding, you didn't tell the people that in the beginning. You say the truck costs a hundred thousand dollars. And maybe then you go back and look at the minutes of it. When I asked, did you get a warranty on this vehicle? You say it didn't come with a warranty. That's the same vehicle we talking about?
We had another one that was on.
It's two different vehicles.
Yeah, we had a different.
Okay. So, uh, all right, then, so we, we buying a lot of trucks. How many, how many diggers you have already?
Two.
You got two, so you gonna, you gonna have a total of three diggers?
Yes. We have one that's very old. I think it's about nineteen years old. We own that one and that was just, we don't, it's, it's in bad shape, but we have it for emergencies.
Well, what is the current price of, since you gonna put a hundred thousand dollars down? Now, what is the, the taxpayers would be paying for the total cost of this vehicle?
Three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. And so the other one was a hundred thousand, right?
The other one was a used bucket truck that we had on lease that we bid out and we bought it used. This is a brand-new truck.
So the other one was like a hundred thousand dollars?
The other one was a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand. So y'all ended up paying a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars total for that truck, right?
No, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
All right. All right.
Any other public comment or question? Okay. Seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll car vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T.
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is read by Councilwoman Elarge Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final ordinance number zero-two-eight of two thousand and twenty-three. It's an ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. Authorizing notice to be served, fixing hearing date, and appointing curator to represent the absentees. Whereas the Director of Planning and Zoning and the City Building Inspector have filed written reports with the City Council declaring that the buildings listed below are in a dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public welfare and, and recommending that said buildings be demolished or put in repair to comply with the building code. And do we, do we have videos of the, I mean, pictures of these? I'm gonna read them all. The first one, we went over before, was Clarence, lots eleven and fourteen, nine forty Lake Street. The second one is located at eight twenty-six Martin Luther King, Robert Murphy and Grant Shields. The third is located at one twenty-one Texas Street, McClauson Investment. I think that's what that is, okay. Next is lot seven, lot five of Bailey Heights, twelve oh five Berry Avenue. Then H Town Hospitality, just on, on the bypass. That's Highway one bypass seventy-six twenty-four, so hotel. Then number six, Sharon Freeman, lots two and eight of the R Stacy Williams subdivision located at fifteen oh three Salter Street. L V Samuel, Samuel's owner at eight seventeen Jordan Street. Zaffrey Rogers. Four thirty-nine Carver Street. Herman Small. Eight thirty-seven Celine Street. O C and Lee H Johnson, lot three. Fourteen forty-two Hill Avenue. Victor and Mabel Cootie. One thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen sixteen Grace Avenue, lot twenty-five, block six of Bailey Heights. Rock Island Missionary Baptist Church. But this is twelve twenty-one Ellis Street, lots two and three of Ellis Dean Edition. Ophelia Johnson, lots four and five, Ellis Dean Edition, twelve fifteen Ellis Street, and Beverly Raschell, owner of lots eight, nine, and ten, block four of Ellis Dean Edition, eleven twenty-four Ellis Street. And this ordinance was introduced on the May, at May eighth and published in the Natchitoches Times on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And move for adoption of ordinance number twenty-eight, zero twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three.
A motion made in second. I know there was some conversation today, Alex and Chantrell. Chantrell, you want to? You want to say something or any, anything else to say? Here, Chantrell?
Uh, no, just to let you know that we do have pictures available just for time purposes. We didn't present all the pictures. But if you want to review what we have, we do have pictures and videos.
We'd like to see them. We can come to your office and see, Ms. what you're saying, you have a show tonight?
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't do a PowerPoint just for a lack of saving time and because we didn't have Mr. Steve and I didn't want to put anything else on the ladies. But we do have pictures available.
Yeah, well, it needs to be shown, I would think.
Yeah. You got your iPad with you now, maybe the show after the meeting or something?
Yeah, yeah, I have it after, yeah.
All right. So if some of the council want to see after the meeting, she's got that. Okay? All righty. Uh, counsel, any comments or questions here?
Any updates on any of them? If any are moving forward with work and?
I've talked with several owners, several of the homeowners, and I've instructed them about they can put it in repair. I still have yet to see that happen. Um, I will, you know, our ordinance does allow them to do so. They just have to make the step to make the repairs.
I see Ms. Brenda Cootie here tonight. I sit, I just see this listed here and I think you're here to speak on that one?
Yes. And which one is that?
Number eleven. Thirteen sixteen Grace Avenue?
Yes. Mabel and Victor Cootie. My name is Brenda Cootie. I don't know how the house became condemned because it's only been boarded up for six months now. It's not in, it's not falling down. It's been upkeep. And I have pictures of it, so I don't know how it's deemed condemned. Thirteen sixteen Gray South? Gray, yes. Okay.
Actually, we do have pictures.
Yes, I have pictures.
Where the house had been abandoned and vacant. Um, I'm not sure how updated your pictures are, but according to the pictures that we have, the house was not secured and there were transients living in the house at the time that we decided to move forward with the condemnation. But as I was restructured, if they're wanting to bring houses up to compliance, they still have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, what, what was out of compliance on this house?
Besides the condition of the house itself?
Yes.
The whole house was, was out of compliance?
They broke the windows out and I boarded it up.
They did break the windows out, but the house itself was not livable.
And, and I'll just reiterate at this point, Ms., I don't know if it's Ms. or Mrs.?
Ms.
Uh, Ms. Cootie. Again, just to kind of say what Chantrell said, I was thinking the same thing. Condemned here does not mean demolished. All right? Um, I think there's even still a thirty-day period, maybe even a little bit more, you think you were saying, but at least a thirty-day period that has to be until any action. So certainly want you to talk directly to Ms. Chantrell, Rock and Planning Zoning, because it seems like you want to get the home up to repair, up to, you know, some standard.
Like I said, I, I had problems getting the renters out. They were swaddened and I contacted the city many times. I waited for the police officer many times and they never showed up to the residents. They deemed it as a crack facility and never showed up. When I was trying to report that people were swaddened there, Randy finally came, got the people out. But I did my best to keep up the property and it's not, um, the windows broke out because they broke them when they left. They didn't want to get, leave. But the houses, the wood floors, the roof is intact, is not falling down. I have pictures of houses worse than that and they're not on the list either.
Well, like I said, the pictures that we have indicate something different. But as we've stated before, you do have time to bring the house into compliance up to standard. It was on our radar because there were vague transients living in and out of the house. Now, as far as the reports, I don't have those reports, but on our end, when you're ready, we can visit tomorrow, you can do your permit and do whatever work you need to do to bring the house in compliance.
Okay.
Yep.
But I've been needing more than thirty days. These windows, they broke out, they broke out all the windows. There's only two windows left in the house.
I don't know if that means thirty days to get it all away. Go ahead, Chantrell.
So what happens today, um, the way the condemnation reports work, it's introduced and then it's finalized. Today makes the day that we mark the, the structures as being condemned. Then that's a thirty-day layover before the city makes any steps to do anything with the property. In that time, we give the property owners time to come in, pull permits, and say what they want to do with the house. And then after that, when they actually submit a legitimate permit, there's still additional time that they have to repair the homes. So it, it saves thirty days that we have before the city can actually touch it. But when they actually pull a permit, that gives them additional time. And as long as they're working with that permit and they're actually showing improvements with that permit, then that'll keep us at bay without moving forward with the actual demolition.
Okay. So still, I'm saying, how did this house get on our radar when one behind me is in worse shape and it was worse than this?
And there's so many more.
And there's so many more.
All right, uh, thank you so much, Ms. Cootie. And if you want to get it repaired, please come see Planning and Zoning. We open at seven in the morning. Uh, yes, sir, you have a comment you'd like to make about a particular property? We'll get you to state your first and last name and then tell us which property you're commenting on.
Robert Murphy, senior. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was here last month, um, talking about the house that, well, actually, the letter they sent me said it was a Jordan Street house. But when I went to the planning and zoning, she said they gave them the wrong address. It was supposed to be the Martin Luther King address. But I've been working slow on these houses. I, I bought permits during COVID. And, uh, she said they ran out, so I, I'm just like that lady. I'm not gonna be able to fix these houses up within months and stuff. It's gonna take me some time. And the other thing I want to ask, because from my conversation with Ms. Rob, she wanted a construction company to do all the work. And I did construction for twenty years, so I can do my own work. I want to see why I had to have, hire a construction company. Also, I asked them about a year ago, the lot next door got some old trees, rotten trees with holes in them. One of those trees fell and kind of damaged the side of the house. Before that, we had a renter in the house. So my houses didn't have leaks in the roof. One of them, one of the houses had a couple of windows knocked out, but that was about it, other than the grass maybe getting high every now and then. I didn't have a whole lot of, you know, problems with that house. But I can fix the houses, but it's just gonna take some time. I can't, I got those houses and some other houses that I need work on, but I can't do them all at one time. So I need to be able to secure the house, one of the houses and work on the other. And I just wanted to ask the, uh, council to give me time to repair those houses I can repair.
And I would say, Mr. Murphy, it is?
Yeah.
Again, just, that, again, that's an offline conversation with Planning and Zoning as early as in the morning, um, just about, you know, what that timeline really looks like and things like that. Like Chantrell said, no action is gonna be taken tomorrow within thirty days or even somewhat beyond thirty days. But some type of real timeline, I think, would need to be shared and discussed with Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, uh, and also, how long do those permits last? Because I wasn't sure how long the permits last.
That's a Chantrell question?
Most permits are thirty-day period, I mean, excuse me, a ninety-day period, but you have to show actual effort. If after the first thirty and ninety days, if there's no action, then the permits are actually lapsed. But you can have up to a year as long as you're showing actual work and you're communicating But you can have up to a year, as long as you're showing actual work, and you're communicating with us, showing that you are doing work. A lot of times, we have people pull a permit, and because they know there's that actual time, the house still will remain with no work being done.
Well, since, since I got those permits, we replaced the windows, I got two permits that Martin Luther King and, and a Jordan Street.
You only have a permit for Jordan, Mr. Murphy? And the reason why we did Murphy Street on Jordan Street, there were several issues.
And Mr. Murphy, we're at the end of time here that we could allow here, but again, if there's any other conversation needs to happen, again, it could take place, um, tomorrow morning with Planting and Zoning, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thanks a lot for being here tonight. Um, any other comment, uh, on somebody who has interest in one of these properties?
Carl Sias, I don't have the interest in any of the property. I, I notice we set a mom here, we pray to God Almighty, we say the pledge of legion to the United States flag, and honor the constitutional sitting here to listen to some heartbreaking things. My heart goes out. We are some heartless, ruthless people when it comes to property and everything else. Where is our dignity for the human race of people that can't afford to hire out a contractor to do the work on a house? Most of these abandoned houses these people have, this is something that the people left them and everything else, and they trying their best, but how can we overcome when we have pressure from the city and not trying to expand? What is a fifty thousand dollars contract? A fifty thousand dollar contract, you got to have a contractor if the job run over that amount. If it's twenty or less, somebody ought to know how to put in a window door and everything else. But like I say, why are we so gutted and so heartless to tear down these people houses when we can have them to restructure these houses and let better heights and sweep it? I brought this issue before, all these abandoned houses and everything, why the city don't buy them? Refurbish them, sell them back to the community and everything else, the city getting a tax rate off these houses and everything else? But y'all rather see vacant lots in our community, we losing voters and everything else, so what do cities, cities turn around and take the property, turn around and resell it, five thousand dollars, and the property probably wasn't, wouldn't worth that much because y'all did have some on the website for that particular price. So, why don't we just take a moment and breathe? To see other people conditioned, they ain't got money to do this here, why can't we just work with them? I, I know it's a stipulation time and everything, but if they go out and they, they do their best, and all they can do their best, why we have to be so heartless?
Counsel, you got any other comment or question here? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, I think we had a motion in second, uh, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries, next item on the agenda is read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. I saw moved that we adopt ordinance number zero three oh.
Second.
Motion made in second, I think this is one of those, we have two budget, uh, deals, one is, um, the next one we'll talk about in just a moment, but this is just one of those standard sort of end of year, um, agenda items. I don't know, Jenna, is there anything in addition, perhaps?
Uh, so typically it's, uh, typically it's the five percent threshold of going over and under on our expenses and revenues. We just want to make sure that our budget is matching the revenues and expenses correctly and accurately.
Okay.
I did speak with Clarissa today, and she said normally, when our expenses and revenues are showing a difference of the five percent threshold, a lot of the time it has to de- depend upon when we're getting statements and, you know, payments and stuff like that coming in.
So, when the payments are coming in?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Uh, comments or questions, counsel, about this, uh, item? Public comments or questions here? Alright, uh, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes, alright, that motion carries also, um, next item is read by Councilman Harrington.
Um, yes, this is ordinance thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, this has been introduced prior. This is an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. This one is in regards to the Jefferson Street sinkhole project, I move to adopt ordinance thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in second, uh, of course, we talked about this, everybody knew this, it was on our local media. Um, the price tag ended up being, do you remember, Matt, I know you know, I know you remember what it was?
Uh, probably close to three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Yep, so three hundred and fifty, something we discovered, think, uh, connected with some of the freeze and things like that, so. But the issue is resolved, and, uh, I think everything, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars later, you know, so. That's what this is, of course, it's not something that we knew would happen, it's one of those things that just, uh, came up, and, uh, but we had to address because it is, uh, city property is sewer, it's a sewer, um, how do you say it?
Gravity sewer main.
Sewer, what, what is it?
Gravity sewer main, sewer.
Gravity sewer main, alright, okay, comments or questions, counsel, about this?
It cost money, but we reacted correctly, quickly, and resolved it, very impressive.
I think how incredible the, they handled the situation, because a house almost went mad. This would have cost a lot more money if that house fell in there, and they somehow, somehow stopped that from happening, which is incredible, uh, it's, it's amazing.
No, really good, really good. Okay, um?
I got a question. Where you got that, um, I think it's the barricade that's right there, that they did, the covered with the concrete? When it rains, it, it got a lot of water that's like sitting right there.
On Jefferson Street?
Yes.
The barricade is gone now, though, right?
No, like the, uh, I think they did the concrete slab?
Concrete, wow.
Yeah, the wall.
Did the curbing?
Oh, yeah.
On the street.
Yeah. Well, we just replaced what was there, that's, that's the DOTD highway, I think that problem was preexisting. Just poor drainage right there, yeah.
Because it's like real bad, it sits up real high when it rains between.
It drains quick, but it pulls up.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, thanks a lot for that, Councilwoman, watching, Eli, uh, any other, any public comment or question here?
Carl Sias, uh, what, what, uh, Ms. Rosemary is actually talking about, when they went into the yard and fixed the problem, they cut all the way down to the main drain in that particular road. And while they did that, all that water that's set up there on that corner there by that two-story house, I don't know it belonged to the city, you say it was, uh, belongs to the highway department? Well, that you all, actually, how we can y'all cut all the way down that road, because if y'all did, only thing y'all had to do was build a drain box to the left side of the street facing back down Amulet, when the water came in there, because you dug a hole all the way down there and put, what size pipe that was? Six-inch pipe?
Sixteen inch.
Sixteen inch pipe, and y'all could have put a drain because it was already dug out, cut a slot out, and y'all could have did that, and when it rained, all that water pours right there, and it don't just go away there, Nelson, it'd be there for a while.
Any other comment or question about this item? Okay, uh, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli? Eli? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries, uh, next few items are for introduction, um, and we've got the first one, uh, read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance number thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches to award the bid for building and site work improvements, Public Works Building sixteen oh eight, Texas Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana, bid number zero six six zero, whereas resolution number twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-three was passed by the Natchitoches City Council on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for building and site work improvements, Public Works Building sixteen oh eight, Texas Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana, bid number zero six six zero, and whereas this bid was advertised in the Natchitoches Times on April eighth, April thirteenth, and April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in accordance with law, and whereas two bid proposals were received and opened as follows. Bid number one, Martin Metal Construction LLC, Natchitoches, Louisiana, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy-three dollars. The second bid, DSW Construction LLC, Natchitoches, Louisiana, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty. Whereas on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the appointed committee of Clarissa Smith, Finance Director, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Donald Forrest, Director of Public Works, and Betty Smith, Councilwoman at Large, reviewed the bid proposals for bids for building and site work improvements, Public Works Building sixteen oh eight, Texas Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana, bid number zero six six zero, and whereas the above appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, Martin Metal Construction LLC, in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy-three dollars. And this is for introduction.
Right, we have a lead engineer on this project, Mr. Norman Assever, Norman, is there anything you want to share with this project, or?
No, ma'am, can you entertain any questions? See, why may I have?
Gotcha, so he said, any questions, anybody, I have counsel looking at this, do you have any questions at this point? Again, it's only for introduction, so, um, you know, there may not be anything that stand out, or there may be something that stands out, stands on them, so.
I'm just ready to see it come to fruition.
Nice to have two contractors from Natchitoches bid on it, and they were both fairly close to each other, so feel like we got a mainline bid, so look forward to moving forward.
Get the city workers over there.
Yep, alright, again, this is just introduction, so, Mr. Norman, thank you for your, um, uh, leadership and professionalism through this process, and, uh, uh, we are looking forward to a, um, a really, really nicely rehabbed building for our Public Works Department and their equipment, okay? Uh, that's the John Deere tractor place, the old one, on Texas Street. Yeah, the question was, is that the old tractor place, just for the record? Okay, so next item is also for introduction, Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, the ordinance authorized the mayor of the City of Natchitoches to award the bid for the runway seventeen thirty-five Texway and Apron Rehabilitation Airport Improvement Program for American Seals of Ohio, NEC Southville, Ohio, for one million ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And I approve to adopt ordinance number zero zero three of two thousand and twenty-three.
Introduction.
Oh, just introduction, yeah.
For introduction.
Okay, and Ed is here, you want to give some more explanation, Ed?
Yeah, sure, this is a project funded by a grant from the FAA, the FAA pays ninety percent, the LA DOTD Aviation Division will pay ten percent, so it's total, uh, one hundred percent grant for the city of Natchitoches and Natchitoches Airport. The project is, uh, what they call a seal coat project, they're going to seal any open or exposed cracks, and then they'll come across with, um, it's kind of a tar-like material, and it's to, um, rejuvenate the existing asphalt, to extend the life of the asphalt. FAA prefers to do this before they go far enough to do a complete mill and overlay project, so we hope to get, you know, five to eight more years out of the existing pavement before it leads to a larger project, which is, uh, milling and relaying the, uh, all the asphalt.
Okay, alright, questions or comments for Ed? Counsel? Alright, thanks for the explanation, Ed, again, just for introduction, so there, opportunity, I think everybody has Ed's contact, alright? Our third item up for introduction is read by Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordinance number zero thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance to designate funds from the American Rescue Plan ARPA for use by the City of Natchitoches to improve funding for, for infrastructure improvements, and to otherwise provide with respect there too. Whereas the City of Natchitoches, sometimes here referred to as the city, is a municipality located in the state of Louisiana under a Home Rule Charter and a Code of Ordinance adopted by ordinance number five of nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas, the Louisiana revised statutes of nineteen fifty has amended that when there has been a change in operations upon which the original adopted budget was developed, the governing authority shall adopt a budget amendment in an open meeting to reflect such change. Whereas the city, huh, charter of the city approved by the Charter Commission of the city, and the voters at the election, November first, nineteen seventy-seven, requires an appropriation of funds by the city be enacted by, by an ordinance of the City Council of the city. And whereas further, the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one enacted by the one hundred and seventeenth Congress of the United States of America, ARPA appropriated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the state of Louisiana, which was then appropriated to the city for the purpose of providing funding for government services that may have seen a shortfall of revenue funding them due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, including but not limited to funding transportation infrastructure projects up to the amount of the city's revenue loss. Whereas further, it is a desire of this governing authority to appropriate ARPA revenue replacement funding to the office of the mayor of the city to be expended by the mayor of the city or administrative designee of the mayor, the finance director, pursuant to the guidelines published by the United States Department of the Treasury. Uh, ruling, rule implementing the coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund and coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established on the, the American Rescue Plan Act. Bid further ordained by the Natchitoches City Council and regular session convened that it is hereby appropriates the ARPA revenue replacement funding to office of the mayor of the city to expend it at the direction of the mayor or the finance director. Bid further ordained, if necessary, that the budget of the city be amended to reflect the receipt of the ARPA revenue replacement funding and its designation for expenditure by the mayor or the finance director for the purposes of properly distributing it to transportation projects, and that, be further, that this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption. And, uh, this is for introduction only.
I think we stated in our budget hearing that, um, have about nine hundred thousand remaining. I mentioned maybe using three hundred and fifty to go with the six fifty that we budgeted in our regular budget, uh, to match a million, uh, for street improvement, the street improvements this fiscal year. Uh, of course, we know, you know, that's, that's a never-ending, uh, type of activity, the maintenance and fixing the streets and things of that nature. Uh, we know our city engineer developed a, uh, street improvement plan, and there are some streets that just kind of fall on that list that is kind of like the next-up type of street, so we're, uh, I think he's still gathering those streets and analyzing it, you know, doing assessment and so forth and so on, so we'll be able to present some streets here pretty shortly to the council for consideration. I wanted to go ahead and start this process so we can move as quickly as possible, um, on the streets to make sure things go seamless with, um, the next street project. So, uh, just wanted to go ahead and start introducing this, um, so we can get, get started, get out of any, uh, if we can predict any bad weather days, we know that, um, you know, it's kind of, sometimes can be unpredictable, but, uh, just wanted to present to see, counsel, at this point, again, it's just for introduction, but, uh, don't know if you've got any comment or questions at this moment. Alright, again, if we do, again, it's just, uh, for introduction, so email, make that call, and hopefully this week, um, we could have a list of streets to you for your consideration. Just want to say, we're going to try to leverage all our resources in this community, uh, to make sure we are, you know, doing as many streets as we possibly can, because I know that's one of the things residents want to see us do, and, um, you know, we're going to try to do as best we can with that in terms of leveraging everything we can. Alright, uh, tho- those are just for introduction, uh, next items, we have a few resolutions up for consideration tonight. The first of these resolutions is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor, resolution number forty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept bids for Love, Louisiana Outdoors Project, Professor M. Richardson Park Improvements, bid number zero six six one, whereas the city wishes to advertise for public bids for Love, Louisiana Outdoors Project, Professor M. Richardson Park Improvements, and whereas sealed proposals shall be addressed to the City of Natchitoches, Office of Director of Purchasing, fourteen hundred. of Purchasing, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana, 71457, or received at the city of Natchitoches Purchasing Department, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana. And whereas the city of Natchitoches will accept sealed and electronic bids for the project until 2:00 PM on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, at the office of the Director of Purchasing, 1400 Sabine Street. Whereas bids will be publicly open and read aloud at the location and time herein above. Whereas upon receipt of proposals, the committee members consisting of Clarissa Brown Smith, Director of Finance, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Warner, Recreation Director, and Christopher Petit, councilmen are to review and make a recommendation of bids received. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Natchitoches and legal session convening that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor, being as hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to order the publication of the above bid. And I move that we adopt resolution number 41 of 2023.
Second.
All right, motion made, a seconded. This is, you know, standard whenever we get ready to do a project over a certain value, we have to advertise for bids, and so that's what we're doing. Then we'll come back, you know, I don't know, do we have another meeting in June or the first meeting in July and accept the low bid that we've got? So again, this is standard process. Of course, this is that $400,000 that our local grants manager wrote, Ms. Gray, to get us these funds for this project. Many conversations with Councilman PT and some of his constituents about some of the things they'd like to see, so this is not something we drew up on our own through feedback with those residents who live in that particular area. And I think we mentioned this a lot of times, renovate the restrooms, walking track, inclusive playset, basketball, half-court basketball court will be done outside of this, so we budgeted some money for this particular project. Our lead engineer is here, Mr. Randall Smoke. Anything needs to be stated, Mr. Smoke? Where have you come? If you've got something, come on to the microphone, please, sir. And I know you know how it works, state your first and last name.
Randall Smoke, CGS Engineering. Actually, just going to have a great improvement to the park, because you will have a hard surface walking trail, quarter of a mile around, so people that want to get a certain number of walking steps in can do that. We'll also have improvements to the restroom facility, upgrade those, add some parking on two sides of the park, so it'll make it much more accessible and just make improvements. So have a new playground on it and a pavilion, so it's just going to be a great improvement to the park.
Okay.
Questions?
Mr., can we have you come forward so that question can be?
I just want to ask, is he going to have bleachers?
I'll answer the question.
The question, you want to repeat the question?
Sure.
Just for the record, that's why we do it.
The question is, will there be any bleachers? And we do not have bleachers added to this park at this time.
Okay, so no bleachers at this time?
No bleachers.
All right, counsel, you got any comments or questions at this point?
I'll make a comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the people that I always considered, you know, Jackson Square, like the heart of the district, and I think the community are going to really appreciate this. One thing that I brought to the mayor's attention, and I'll just show you where we could look at, we talked about how narrow the road is right here on this portion of Lake Street, and one thing that I think we should consider is maybe moving the fence in so that at some point we could probably widen the road, like, right here on that end of Lake Street for traffic. Like, right now, you know, mostly, when you get a lot of big trucks coming from a steep area, somebody got to pull over because the street's so narrow, which, you know, that's all throughout Natchez, but just something that we could consider.
We could certainly look at that, I think, as we're going into the construction phase of it, we have to be very careful about what gets changed, since it is a CDBG block grant project, because they're very particular on changing the scope of the work.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So we just have to look at that carefully and see if we can be done.
Okay.
And we probably base a lot of that on when the bids come in, to see what prices we get.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Any public comments? I think I see a couple hands, but, yeah, somebody come first. And sir, state your first and last name, and then you can get into your question or comment about this project.
My name is John Payne. I would like to know, would the community be involved in the destruction of the park for what they want or what they need, or he would just go ahead and put in a park without consulting the people in the neighborhood?
Well, actually, I stated that earlier, that there's been much consultation, and I don't know, Councilman PT, you might want to say some things there.
Whenever we looked at the park, you know, we decided, like, what the primary use, and so we talked to, like, a lot of residents and the people in that area to decide, like, what is needed. And so I think we kind of did get the community input, where we kind of looked at the scope of the, you know, what the park needed.
The park is built now. The people in the neighborhood wanted to know why they wouldn't have basketball court or something put in for that area, because there's most of black kids back there, and they was wondering why they didn't have a basketball instead of just what they have now.
Right, and that's what this project is going to do. This project, I don't know if you heard me, but yeah, this project, we are going to include a half-court basketball court in the park. And that was one of the, Councilman PT, you remember, that was one of the things, one of the main things the residents said back there.
My main question was, were they going to be a survey or something for the people in the neighborhood to know what they want in that park, or they just going to build something in that park?
Well, what we're saying, there's already been, we've already done the communication with the public. Whenever you do LCDBG, you have to hold a public forum anyway, and at that public forum, I mean, we had it, it was sometime last year, but at that public forum...
There's a lady there right behind the park. I don't know if any of y'all don't talk to her, now she live there. She don't want no baseballs hitting her house, no softball. She don't want no softballs in her yard. So have y'all talked to her? Have anybody talked to her?
Who is she?
It's always been a softball.
Yeah, it's been a baseball park. That's what it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it is now, but the ball's coming to her house and to her yard. She don't want that.
Yeah, it won't necessarily take away the baseball feature, but, like I said, that was an opportunity to do a public forum, we did it, and there was even, we did a couple of them, because we didn't win the grant on the first shot, so we actually did a couple of them, and that was, so there's been much feedback with members who live in that immediate community.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mayor, I can't say we make it, get Kevin involved in it, but I've seen in other parks that they do, like, some kind of type of knitting, like in old situations, so that may be something we can consider to, you know, keep the balls in play, you know, in the park.
Okay.
Vincent Covey, 556 Texas Street. I just want to suggest that you all correct the name. The park is named after a famous man here, Professor F. M. Richardson. You have Professor M. Richardson, and he was principal of Central High School, and I'm looking out there, and there's quite a few of Central High's old schools, and we would like just the F. M. in there.
Right, and certainly when we come back for, come back with the bids to approve the bids, we'll have it corrected. Yep, any other public comment or question here? All right, thank you, Mr. Smoke, for being here today. CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes, all right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is read by Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution numbers 042, 2023. A resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept the bids for equipment replacement for a sludge sticker, number two, City of Natchez Waste Water Treatment Plant. Whereas the city wished to advertise the public bids for the equipment of replacement sludge sticker, number two, the City of Natchez Waste Water Treatment Plant, 900 Larry Fletcher Road, Natchez, Louisiana, bid number 0662. And whereas the sealed proposal be addressed to the City of Natchez Office of Direct Purchasing, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchez, Louisiana, 71457, or received at the City of Natchez Purchasing Department, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchez, Louisiana. And whereas the city would accept the sealed electronic bids for the project until 2:00 PM on Thursday, June 29, 2023, at the office of direct and purchase of 1400 Sabine Street. Whereas upon receipt proposal, committee members, Clarissa Brown Smith, Director of Finance, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Utility Director, and Eddie Harrington, city councilmen are to review and make recommendation of the bids received. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Natchez is a legal session convening that the Honorable Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr., to be hereby authorized, empowered, and direct the order of the public and above bids, and I move to adopt resolution number 042 of 2023.
Second. Motion made, a seconded. Matt?
This is to replace the operating equipment on a piece of machinery out at the wastewater plant, Larry Fletcher Wastewater Plant. We have two sludge stickers out there, they were, they're both original to the plant, so that makes them about 30 years old. We're going to replace all of the mechanical equipment in the east stickner, number two, and then hopefully, year after next, we'll do the west stickner, because they're the same age. I can explain what a sludge stickner does at a sewer plant, but it's not very exciting.
Yeah, we probably don't want to hear all that. Might not be, might not be too appetizing either.
No.
No, okay. All right, counsel, you got any comments or questions for Matt? Again, this is just advertising, accepting bids, just like with the Richardson Park project. Any public comments or questions here? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, CNN, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is read by Councilwoman Laura Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 043 of 2023. A resolution approving a permanent utility easement and right-of-way for placement of water booster station with associated temporary construction easement across property of Kenneth Newhauser and Barbara Newhauser. Said easement depicted on May 2, 2023, surveyed by Thornton, releasing and terminating that right-of-way dated April 10, 1986, and recorded at conveyance book number 415, page 798, and authorizing the mayor to execute the utility easement and right-of-way and termination of right-of-way on behalf of the city of Natchitoches. Whereas the city of Natchitoches, sometimes herein, currently has a right-of-way for a water booster station on the property of Kenneth and Barbara Newhauser, as established by instrument dated April 10, 1986, and recorded at conveyance book 415, page 798. Whereas the city desires to relocate the water booster station to the west of its current location. And whereas further, the city has negotiated a 20-foot by 20-foot easement for the location of the water booster station, with said site being situated on the southeastern border of property owned by Newhauser, and on the northern right-of-way of White Oak Lane. Said easement situated in Section 10 Township, 9 North Range, 7 West, and being more fully shown on a tax sur, shown on a survey by Brandon Thornton. Whereas further, the city has further negotiated temporary work easement area to the east, north, and west of the permanent easement. And... Whereas further, in order to facilitate the placement of the water booster station and design the result in improvement in water service to the area, Newhauser has agreed to grant the permanent easement and temporary work easement area to the city of Natchitoches. Whereas further, the city has agreed to release the old right-of-way recorded in the conveyance book. And whereas further, an easement and right-of-way has been negotiated and drafted. Whereas further, the city council, the city of, city council, the city of Natchitoches is of the opinion that it is the best interest of the city to enter into the right-of-way for permanent and temporary easements, and the council desires to have the right-of-way for permanent and temporary easements executed on behalf of the city. Now therefore be resolved that the city council in legal session convening does hereby approve the attach, approve the right-of-way for permanent and temporary easements, and does hereby further, hereby authorize the mayor to execute the right-of-way for permanent and temporary easements on behalf of the city. And I move for adoption of resolution 043 of 2023.
Second. All right, motion made, a seconded. Matt, you'll give us a simplified version?
Yeah, we, we need to replace the water booster station that serves the White Oak Lane area, it's real hilly out there. This booster station that's there was, been there about 37 years, and it's all original equipment, so we're going to replace it with all new, and we've spoke with Mr. Newhauser, and he is going to let us relocate the new booster station right next to the existing, because we have to keep the existing in service while we build the new. So once we get the new one online, we will then take the old one and demolish it and get all that equipment out there, returning that portion of land back to the landowners, and then establishing a new right-of-way where the new booster station sits.
Pretty simple, and I assume this next piece is going to do something similar, just a different part of time.
Yeah, the next piece is just that the existing booster station sits on, half on Newhauser property and half on the Abels' property, sits right on the property line, but we're going to move it to the Newhauser property, but we have to have a temporary work easement from the Abels', the other property owners, just so we can be in there and be on their property while we're working. And that's all it is, is a temporary work easement, but basically the same thing.
Gotcha, gotcha, all right. Any comments or questions, counsel? As it pertains to resolution number 43? Any public comments or questions here? Okay, CNN, oh, yeah, we got one back there.
Deborah Thompson, I think you know these people, but what if somebody else owns that property, and they say you can't cross the property to do what you need to do? What do you do?
I think, Matt, did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, I see, what did you say?
So we're, we're getting a temporary easement from these owners of this property to go to something that the city owns.
Correct.
And that's the only way for the city to get to the city's property.
Well, the booster station is right, is right against the road, so you step off the road and you're at the booster station. But we're just asking for a 20-foot work easement beside it, so we don't actually have to cross their property.
Suppose you get someone there, when they're gone, who decides they don't want to let you do that, what do you do?
Well, the easement is forever. So once they sign the easement, if they sell the property to a new owner, in their paperwork at closing, and Eddie and Alex can correct me if I'm wrong, in their closing papers, that easement will be listed, so they'll know it's there.
And they cannot refuse to let the city do that?
Not to my knowledge, no, no, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other question or comment here? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes, all right, that motion carries. Councilwoman Washington, Eli, is going to read resolution number 44 of 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 044, 2023. The resolution approving a temporary work easement association with the contract of the water booster station across property of Amy Stroll, Strod, oh, Strad, thank you, and Jamie, and Jeremy Wayne Abel said temporary easement be pitched on the May 2, 2023, survey of Thornton, release and temporary, set the right-of-way date April 2, 1996, recording that conveyance book 415, page 805, and authorize the mayor to execute the temporary easement and the right-of-way of the temporation of the right-of-the-way on behalf of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, and I move to adopt resolution number 044, 2023.
Second.
Motion made, a seconded. I believe Matt already explained this one. This is just a temporary easement, unlike the other one, right?
This is just a work easement, yes.
Work easement, okay, all right, all right. Any questions, counsel, about that? Any public? Any public comments or questions here on this particular resolution? All right, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. The last two items are appointments to the Water Works District 1 Board for the City of Natchitoches, which was referenced earlier, you remember the conversation with Summerlands, in order to get permission, if you will, or franchise agreement to do the kayaking venture, they had to go through the, this same board, and, and then also come to the city, so it sounds like they got their approval through the board already. So, this first one is read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 045 of 2023, a resolution reappointing Gene Spielman on the Water Works District 1 Board of Directors for the City of Negative. Whereas the term of office for Mr. Gene Spielman as a member of Water Works District 1 Board expired January 1, 2023, whereas the negative city council wish, wishes to reappoint Gene Spielman as a member of the Water Works District Number 1 Board, and whereas this appointment is for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2023, and expiring January 1, 2027. I so move that we adopt Resolution Number 045.
Second.
Motion made, a seconded. Anybody here on behalf of Mr. Spielman? No? I did speak with him, he told me he's got obligations in terms of caring for his wife, so he's not here with us tonight. I believe, Council, I did send over to you a bio of sorts on Mr. Spielman, and more than a 50-year resident of the City of Natchitoches, graduated from Northwestern State University. I think he spent, I don't know, 30-plus, maybe 40 years, I think it may have say, may say, at NRMC. Many of those years were as the CEO of the hospital, so he's willing to serve again, he's highly endorsed, so wanted to put him back up for your consideration. Don't know if you have any comments or questions? Okay? And just, kind of like we saw with the kayak adventure, whenever there's some activity that wants, that people want to, you know, take place on Sibley, the city doesn't have souls, the way I understand it, we don't have soul right to do it. They have to go through the Water Works District 1 Board first for them to get approved, I think, is it a five-member board? It's a five-member board, and of course, they term out, but had to get permission there, then get from us as well. I think there are some funds as well that they decide, but it's very specific to the Sibley improvement of Sibley Lake, so it's not like they can use those funds somewhere else in the City of Natchitoches, so just wanted to say full disclosure. All right, any public comments or questions here? Okey-dokey, CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Last, final item on the agenda, we have the term of late Judge Peyton Cunningham, that needs to be filled, and that's read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 46 of 2023, a resolution adopting, appointing Jackie Stafford to fill the expired term of the late Judge Peyton Cunningham on the Water Works District 1 Board of Directors for the City of Natchitoches. And whereas due to the expired term of the late Judge Peyton Cunningham as a member of the Water Works District 1 Board, for many years, the vacancy will need to be filled, and whereas the Natchitoches City Council wishes to appoint Jackie Stafford to fill this vacancy on the Water District Number 1 Board, and whereas this appointment is for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2023, and expiring January 1, 2027. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Natchitoches does in legal session convene, hereby appoint Jackie Stafford as a member of the Water Works District 1 Board of Directors, beginning immediately, and I move that we adopt Resolution Number 46 of 2023.
I second.
Motion made, a seconded. Sent you a very brief bio as well on Mrs. Jackie Stafford. She's a 40, she's a native, native to Natchitoches, has lived on Carver 40-plus years, been married to Mr. Kevin Stafford, Chief Stafford of the Kishada Police Department, but been married to him over 40 years, two children, Candace Stafford and KJ Stafford, three, four grandchildren. She's worked, she's recently retired, she's worked in education here locally for a number of years, just an upstanding citizen. Of course, that being a Carver, been living on Carver, of course, that's in District 1, Council of Inheritance District, so, like I said, again, I think both of these individuals are, will serve well, will be committed to serving on Water Works District 1, and don't know if you have any comments or questions, Council, at this point?
It should be noted that all these positions are fully volunteer.
Right. Good point. Good point. Any public comments or questions here?
Even though they volunteer, what makes her qualified?
I'm sorry, would you state your first and last name?
My name is Precious Barbara. Even though they volunteer, how are they chosen, even in the volunteerism of a job like this?
Well, I think it's just somebody, kind of like Councilman Harrington was alluding to, you have to have somebody who's willing to serve. I don't know if there's any stipulations in terms of being a actual in the city, or could they be in the parish, but you just want an upstanding citizen who can soundly make some decisions about some of the matters that are going on, and I think, really, like the one that's coming before him with the kayaking, so you want able people who will give the time to it, because one of the challenges is, you know, having people who are willing to serve and commit the time. I don't think it's a very large time commitment here, but...
So you believe that she has the knowledge to bring information to help with this board, Ms. Stafford?
Yeah, I believe to make the decisions before this board, and again, like I said, like the one with the Summerlands, that would be such as the decisions that they would make, do we give them a franchise agreement or not? So I think, yeah, she, I certainly think she's capable, and I think Mr. Gene Spielman as well, both of them are capable of doing that.
Okay.
Any other public comment or question here? CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Do we have a few announcements? All right, we always encourage people to download the Go Natchitoches app, with your events and everything on it, also regroup as well in terms of emergency notifications. We do want to note, this coming Monday, City of Natchitoches, the offices of City of Natchitoches will be closed for Memorial Day, that's one of the holidays we have listed, all right? And is there something else? Our performers market, I think, has been going well, as Randy can attest to, really good crowd on Saturday, we were blessed with good weather. This is the Battle of the Badges. Is this what they, is this that competition we're talking about?
Mr. Mayor, they pushed that actually to June 3, because it was in conflict with the events on that day.
I got you, I got you, so June 30th, June 30th, okay, so we'll, we'll change it. The performers market's still going on. Okay. Do you know the theme, Randy? Did you say 30th or what?
The 3rd.
The 3rd, the 3rd, June 3rd.
The following week.
Okay, good, good deal, June 3rd. All right, so I don't know if they're going to do Paint Me a Picture this Saturday, and do Battle of the Badges on June 3, but I appreciate you catching that, Chief Collins. All right, so make it out there, y'all, we have vendors who come, we have some local vendors, but we have vendors who drive, and they have some really good product, you know, they see the worth of coming here, so just kind of support that. Is there another announcement up there? All right, of course, we've announced this already, but June 17, we're celebrating Juneteenth. I think the week, before I say anything else about this, the week before that, June 10, there will be a parade. Councilwoman at large, you want to say a little bit about that? I think you might have a flyer.
Thank you. There will be a parade starting June 10. Lineup will be at 2:00 PM on Texas Street next to Checkers, the parking lot. The parade will roll at 10:00 AM, it will roll down Texas Street, all the way to Amulet, and turn left on Amulet, and it will terminate at the City Park. We will have food, we'll have vendors, we'll have face paint, fun activities for the kids, and the City Police Department incorporating this with us also. So we're looking to have a great time, it's family-oriented, just come out and have a good time, see the parade.
And if I may, Councilwoman at large, do what you like for me to tell me, since I have the flyer, that the deadline for registration for the parade would be June 5, and you can contact Maria Magum?
Magum.
Magum. What it is, Tantil Palmer, and Councilwoman at large, Betty Smith.
And they need application for the, if they're going to ride in parade, they can see me or one of the other persons working on the committee for an application, if you're riding in the parade.
Okay, again, that's June 10.
And... 1-0, 1-0, June 10.
And also, there will be a, what it is, a brutalizer being done, so be prepared.
Just following the protocols as we typically follow, I got you. All right, so again, this is 17, we've announced that we're going to see some more publicity on it, the basketball tournament, we're trying to get everybody lined up for that, but that's going to be the kickoff of the youth league or jamboree, I think, like we've been doing, or have done last year. I see you back there, Kevin. Pop-up shops, starting at 3, and then the Freedom Festival downtown stage, starting at 7 o'clock. There's a band that's coming on before Mr. Keith Frank, so, and this is free admission, and, and really, we're going to start to say, but, you know, the title sponsor really wouldn't be possible without them, as Cambridge Waterway Commission, so we really appreciate that, and we'll get all of that out there in due time. I actually saw a couple, is that the end of the announcements? That's the end of the announcements? Is there an announcement that you two have, or a question about the announcements?
I just want to confirm, on June 10, the parade starts at 2:00 PM?
The lineup, I'm sorry, the lineup is at 2:00 PM, and we'll roll off at 3:00 PM.